I have number three. A motion to release certain previous approved executives for a I have number three, motion to release certain previous approved executives for
We don't have the same thing.
Are you sure we got the right one?
I have number four then. Motion to approve the general proceeds for special board meeting February fourth, two thousand and twenty. Move by trustee Todd, second by trustee. Does that stand clear?
Trustee Bill?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Potenczyk?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next item, motion to approve the general proceeds for regular board meeting of January twenty eighth, twenty two thousand and twenty.
Second.
Move by trustee Bill, second by trustee Potentzki, any questions?
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Potentzki?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee, yes.
Yeah. Motion carried. I have number C, motion to approve the general proceeds for the committee meetings I propose on January twenty first, two thousand and twenty.
Second.
Move by trustee Todd, second by trustee Bill, I have any questions?
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Potentzki?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Bill?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Motion carried. Okay, get the public comment which we're going to do now. I appreciate everyone that comes up and uh for the public comment, I put some uh hand sanitizer right there. Would you please use it before you touch the mic? Um, just a precaution, I'd like air caution. So would you please use the sanitizer before you touch the microphone? And uh so please use that. Um, the uh, public comment, I'll question the comments, we uh direct it to the mayor and I will answer all comments at the end of the comments. And it will be uh, three minutes. And as always, those kind of replies or I believe, please state your name.
Judy Castor.
You can use the
Can I touch it in my
But you touch it.
Okay.
I mean, I should say everybody comes up there. Because somebody's gonna come behind you and touch the same pole here, is what makes you I just don't wanna
No problem.
I mean, it's just to save everyone. Not just you, it does wreck it.
Judy Castor. First of all, I'd like to say it's the second week in a row. There's different agendas. My agenda does not read the way yours reads. It, it's missing parts or I, I don't know, and I don't understand the uh reasoning behind having two different agendas. Secondly, I would like to thank Mr. Weller and his department for um their excellent work while they were out following him, what had him during the snow. I hadn't seen him to talk to him since. Thirdly, I uh for those of you that don't know, and I don't know uh why, when I've been told, but our previous fire chief, uh, Al Stalbrad is in the hospital. And uh I credit a lot to him. Since we are at the top of the uh agenda, it's difficult to post questions on what might be coming up during the meeting, therefore, I have nothing negative to say tonight. Thank you.
Could you show me the agenda that you found? Okay, I can ask a question, so what she said was right. But that is the problem, I had, I had three different ones.
I said I'm not touching the button.
I just wanted to say thank you to the mayor and to Kevin Weller and the public works department for updating the marquee. It's great to have current information up there. And I hope it continues. And the only other thing I'd like to say there is three days that we had meetings. I still haven't talked to a number of people that don't know in the meetings. So it might be a good idea to come see another. Thank you.
Yes, sir, okay. My name is Charles Punderdexter, I'm the president of the Deer Creek Home Association. I've been a resident of uh Southwood for twenty-six years. You know, I've seen my home value now from two hundred and sixty thousand dollars to a hundred and seventy thousand in twenty-six years. I've been there. I've been in the entire construction unit there. Uh, you know, I took notes and walked around that stuff today. You know, uh, they had fire hydrants that hasn't been painted since I've been here for twenty-six years. I have street lamps there out. I have thirty-nine dead trees for the last two years. I have a certain resident in nine fourteen Maryburn Drive who hasn't, has been without half her driveway in over a year and a half. You know, the average job homeowner in Deer Creek pays eighty-five hundred dollars a year in taxes. There's a hundred and seven homes. That comes up with over nine hundred and nine thousand a year that the residents in uh Deer Creek pay for taxes. I mean, I know the village won't get all that money, but they get half of it, it's four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. If the village get a third, it's three hundred and three thousand. Okay, and in my twenty-six years, I have seen no infrastructure work done in our Deer Creek. Maryburn Drive needs to be patched and overlaid from College Road to Indian Lake. The road is in very bad shape. There are six sidewalks, squares, that are teed up eight to nine inches. Any kid running, fall. You're talking about a sixty thousand dollar lawsuit, I'm sure your attorney could agree, that could happen by a kid just falling. Uh, and three years ago, I, I bet with uh, at the board meeting here I came, and I gave the mayor, the trustee, and the public works director
One minute.
that scored footage of how many sidewalks need to be replaced. You know, I missed the last board meeting, but we all talked about more forensic audits, spent two hundred and forty thousand dollars, and our village is falling apart. I like to know if things are really done, I have the certain president, he is president of Deer Creek Home Association.
Um, as far as, let me start off at the beginning, um as far as the police chief being in the hospital, he just went there since his last time, but fire chief, I'm sorry. Ex-fire chief. Um, and uh, I don't announce things like that because I don't know if that's a family matter. So, but since you do know about it, then if you would like to pay him a visit or contact someone that his family is, fine, but I don't facilitate that type of for him being in the hospital, so I wouldn't. But, yes, he is, and uh if anybody like to go see him, I'm sure they would have to, I mean, I did, he go there, I think he I don't know if he, I think he still have regular visitors, so I don't think it's gonna be a problem. He's very welcome, as far as the uh and I'm sure the public works could say you're welcome too, for the person that says thank you for the uh updates in the marquee. Uh, we try to do that, but if something happens, that wouldn't be our top priority, is this marquee. So if we have those problems, well, naturally, they will take precedent over the marquee, we're gonna try to keep the marquee up to date as much as we possibly can. As far as being out of Deer Creek, and uh, I'm sure between the village administrator and public works, uh, they're gonna, public works director, you're leaving out, uh, right after, after the reports are done. He heard everything you had to say, I will tell you, if there's something in the works right now, to not just Deer Creek, but throughout the village, that we're gonna try to address some of these problems, not just streets, the trees, sidewalks, uh, and lighting. So that's something that's gonna be, you're gonna start now. And I asked him for a vote today, so he can go forward with some of this these uh quotes, so we can get some of this work done. And it hasn't been a while, um, over there, because I haven't ever seen anything in the streets other than patching, so, but it comes at a cost. And it does come at a cost. That being said, I move on to uh, reports. As you saw today, and we're gonna try to do this for, for a while, um, is air caution. We don't know, I actually, I've talked to several people in uh, health industry, and we, I mentioned two significant about the coronavirus. Now, it's not a joke, and I hope anyone takes it that way, so if you, if you're asked to uh, use the sanitizer, please do so. Because, you know, especially with seniors, you guys should carry, carry that in your pocket, because we're more, we're more susceptible than most people, anyone over sixty, with any type of respiratory disease, it's very vulnerable to this virus. So if you, you know, you should out care it with me, but as they told us a lot of times, you can wash your hands as much as you possibly can, there's nothing wrong with continuing to wash your hands, because you can transfer it just by touching something or touching your mouth. So, that's something that, that I don't take lightly, and um I do fall into some of those categories, um, that you may be some more susceptible to them. Um, yesterday, there was a meeting here, um, asking, and there was a lot of people here, uh, not yesterday, I'm sorry. Today, there was a meeting uh here, and then, yes, it was a meeting here, uh, yesterday. Yeah, yesterday, yeah, another meeting. And uh, this is a lot of questions to be, and a lot of things to be asked about, we're trying to come, trying to get underway with our housing. And uh, trying to make sure that we can get some of these homes taken care of, uh, even brought. Uh, find out what it takes, if somebody wants to purchase a home that's in disarray, find out if we can get a clear title. And lastly, and it's always the last step, is to actually demolish, but I like to keep that as a last resort, demolish anything, because once you do that, you know, you can't come back from that. So we're trying to get the land banks, there's several land banks involved, but my question was, how's a person that wants to buy a home that's under a certain amount can acquire a home in the, in the village? Because a lot of mortgage companies go over one or six thousand dollars, and they totally do progress for that. So if you want to, after the meeting is over with, uh, I'll pass some of this information readily available, and it's also available at the village uh, at any time to come up and pick up some information, if you make some of the phone calls to find out about homeownership, uh, and that's, you know, anyone that wants to, to go into that, I mean, it's always good to own your home, and uh, but a lot of times, maybe obstacles, and you don't you don't overcome those obstacles, right, so you actually start uh, getting involved, but they are there, and they're there to help homeownership. That's about all that I have, I just wanted to make everyone aware that uh I don't know how many times I can say about this coronavirus, please, please caution. Okay, air caution. You know, you can't wash your hands enough, you can't use sanitizer enough. As a matter of fact, some places don't even have sanitizer, so there will be none of the shit when they come here, so you know, it's just, it's just something that you should do here, there's cats doing a lot of different uh, public events. There's cats doing a lot of things where people gather, a hundred or more. Uh, so, obviously, it's something that's important, and we're telling, we're finding out, we don't have enough kits in Illinois, testing everyone, so like I stated before, I don't think it's an epidemic, but I'm not a, a, a health person, I'm a, I'm a administrator, so I don't know, but if, if, if people are, if the stock market is affected by it, it must be something that's really, really devastating, so I just would tell everybody, when you go somewhere, I would keep that sanitizer with me, and I would also wash my hands as much as possible. That being said, I'm, I'm
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have one thing to report, and that is, um, it is signed for the CBBG CBBG grant, uh, to be completed. The board of trustees voted to submit an application a couple of weeks ago, so I'm working on that application, and I truly appreciate our village engineer for his assistance in that role. Know that applications due this coming Friday, and we anticipate needing that deadline.
Mr. Chris Wade?
Uh, hopefully, everybody can hear me, but I'll get the mic in a second. Um, just to contain, there's a lot of activity that's going on in the past week and a half, however, I want to change the schedule on that help, and I just want to commit my, um, chief of police and chief of fire, as we talked about it, we're all focused on the fires, we're all focused on uh we install our defibrillators, and our heart arrest system, and chief has been, uh, chief of police and committee for all of us, so we are certified by totally two folks in the fires, but I'm still
Is it gonna be a class on how to use this?
Oh, absolutely, uh, the chief of police has actually trained, and you can echo on that later, um, about that, but in here, we're probably the next group of people that's gonna be running another, gonna take care of public works, and then we're gonna be the next group, and so that goes with all the corporate authorities as well, and so I'm interested in being trained, um, CPR and also how to use the schedulators. Uh, we would definitely encourage, and we'll make sure we get those dates out for you as well. Yes, it's being right now.
Building engineer, Mr. Jeff Rattler?
Good evening, Mayor. Like to give an update on some of our projects in progress. First of all, the I three ninety-four water main replacement project, we have received the approved I E P A construction permit last week. The project is in final Q A Q C, and is likely to be bid early next month. The West Elevated Tank Paint Project, the project is in Q A Q C, and that is likely to be bid in April or May. The two hundred and twenty-first Street Colbert Replacement, we have applied the I D N R for floodway permitting, the project is in final Q A Q C, and that's also likely to bid in April or May. And finally, the logistics center study, the project is thirty percent complete. We are hoping to get feedback from C M Railroad towards the end of the month, and the study is expected to be completed in December. And that concludes my report, Mayor, thank you very much.
Thank you. Treasury report, Miss Anthony Finch? I'm sorry, why are you doing that, you might go past that now. Um, for village attorney, Mr. Piper McGrath.
Good evening, Mayor, and I'm clerk trustees. As of today, we have the following balances. In the corporate account, we have five hundred and twenty-four thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight dollars. The reserve account is eight hundred and fourteen thousand. The senior center is four thousand, three hundred and forty-nine dollars. Water sewer is six hundred and ninety-one thousand, nine hundred and fourteen dollars. The water sewer depay account is two hundred and nineteen thousand, six hundred and fifty-four dollars. The line of credit is three hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars, for a total of available cash of two million, six hundred and forty thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars. In the restricted fund account, the C N A, C N account, we have forty-two thousand. The D A, D E A account, we have a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and forty dollars. Southwood's housing account, one thousand, forty, twenty-seven dollars. The tip account, five hundred and ninety thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars. The tolling account, thirteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars. The holding money laundry account, eighteen thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars. The spending drug account, twenty-four thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven dollars. The spending money laundry account, eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars. The M F T account, two hundred and ninety thousand, four hundred and ninety-one dollars, for a total restricted funds, one million, ninety-nine thousand, one hundred and forty-seven dollars. That concludes my report.
All right, Mr. Wade, uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Finch. Um, is there a way, can you give us, can you provide a copy to the board?
Yes.
You know, in your, in your box?
Yes, sir, thanks.
Report to the Department of Finance and Administration.
Thank you, dear Mayor, and I'm clerk board. The accounts payable and payroll disbursement as marks intended as follows. Payroll for the week of February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty was a hundred and eighty-five thousand, seventy-seven dollars and seventy-seven cents. The accounts payable, that's gonna be asked to approve for this evening, is in the amount of two hundred and thirty-one thousand, four hundred and thirty, two hundred and thirty-one thousand, four hundred and thirty-two dollars and ninety-three cents, for a total disbursement of four hundred and twenty-six thousand, five hundred and ten dollars and seventy cents. That concludes my report.
Right. Fire department chief, Stephen Barrett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I'd just like to touch on a couple of things real quick. One is, uh, this coronavirus, I am part of, uh, there's a lot of state agencies that's being, uh, put on standby. One is such as, uh, Illinois Medical Emergency Response Team, uh, which I am a part of. It's due to the fact that a lot of our hospital resources are being overtaxed and overwhelmed with a lot of these, uh, incidents and happening. But the number one thing is that, uh, the flu is still hurting more people than this virus. And so, one thing that I just wanted to make mention, I know we talked about using the hand sanitizer. The hand sanitizer is, uh, not, uh, gonna save you from everything, so they recommend that after that third use of the hand sanitizer, that you actually wash your hands, because after that third use, you're just collecting bacteria on your hands. Um, the fire department has responded to twenty-nine calls from the service period of February twentieth through March fifth, there were no major incidents. Uh, we did have one, uh, one of our firemen, Jordan Roy, completed his training through Prairie State College and graduated on last Tuesday, and we're just awaiting his final test results. We currently have two firefighters in our academy, in the academy that, uh, should be graduating within the next couple of months. And I'm happy to say that after these next two, uh, graduate, we will have, our department will be, um, everyone in our department will be fully, uh, certified through the state of Illinois. Not too many departments can actually say that, and when I say that they're fully certified, they, they are fully certified, and I'm, uh, really happy about that. Um, the other thing is, uh, Mr. Williams talked about the defibrillators. We were able to get, um, a defibrillator for every, uh, building in our community, uh, such as community center, public works, fire department, and, uh, the community center. And, uh, we were really blessed to get these, because when favor go out, favor comes back. And so, the people that gave us these actually really blessed us, so, um, I just wanted to thank uh, the police chief for his, uh, hard work with helping me with this, and that concludes my report.
Uh, chief, are you saying that these fibrillators that we got were given to us, we had to pick on?
No, that's not what I'm saying. They were very, very discounted. Very, very discounted.
Okay, that's good.
And we got an upgrade.
Okay, thank you. Uh, police department, Chief Wade?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, village board trustees. Just to add to the, uh, fire chiefs, time is concerning that, uh, yeah, we did get them at a discount. Um, also, of course, the training is coming as a discount as well. Um, you're welcome. Um, so, uh, but what it means to the citizens is this. It's not just about the ones that are inside of each municipal building. What it means is, um, all of your firefighters, as well as your police officers, have, uh, renewed their certifications um, for first aid and the use of the A E D. And because he was able to get such a great deal, we were able to get more. So now, when you dial nine-one-one, and someone is having a medical emergency that might require a A E D, the police officer who shows up will also have one in his car. And so, this way, yes, one will still be calling for an ambulance, however, if you're in immediate need in distress, uh, in the middle of having cardiac arrest, we will be helping, um, because seconds count. And I don't want to teach the entire class over again, but, uh, yes, it's, it's seconds count, uh, when it comes to cardiac arrest. So, um, that is what it means by getting, I mean, really, a really good deal on this, so we can have the additional ones, so that when the officers show up at your residence, should someone be in the middle of having cardiac arrest, we are there to help immediately. So, with that being said, um, also, uh, I did, uh, send a press release um, out, as well as to the village board concerning, uh, shooting investigation from the twenty-seventh, uh, in the early morning hours on the eighteen-hundred block, uh, excuse me, First Street. Uh, anyone with any additional information, please contact our police department. Um, also concerning when, whenever you're contacting the dispatch center, they have now, um, started a protocol, uh, by reading a, uh, prompt sheet from the C D C. This way, whenever our officers or our firefighters or anyone from the village responds, uh, we will have prior knowledge of whether or not these people are, uh, having any symptoms of the virus, any food symptoms at all, if anyone inside of the home is carrying a temperature, as well as had they, because they asked, have you been outside of the country now? So at least for the next few weeks, probably months, whenever you call, while they're getting information, these are additional questions that they will ask, so please be patient. They will ask you your pertinent information initially, but they will, in addition, while we're still there, while, I mean, while we're still driving toward your residence, uh, they will be asking additional, uh, so, questions, so they will know exactly what we're walking into. Um, for the period between February twenty-sixth and, uh, tonight, the police department responded to over three hundred and fifty calls, the service. Uh, during that same, same time period, uh, we also had a total of nine arrests. Uh, Mr. Mayor, village board, that concludes my
Thank you. Public works director, Mr. Kevin Weller?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, if I could, I'd like to give a little bit of information of, uh, what's being asked every once in a while, and what's been coming up and asking. Uh, I wonder why certain things aren't getting done, and why isn't, why doesn't it seem like it's getting done? So I just have some photos from So, I just have some totals from two thousand nineteen, so give some information out here. And this is just some of the work that Public Works does, um, including with some of the stuff, just everyday work that we don't put down necessarily in, in information like this. Um, two thousand, two thousand nineteen totaled storm-sorred mantles. So, string bags up, we get debris on the mantles, we have to go out there, we have to pick some mantles off. So, out of two thousand nineteen season, we cleaned over two hundred forty-five mantles. Most of the debris is residential debris, grass, and garbage. This is what we have to do, and overtime included. Sign work, most of these poles, most of this sign work is accidents running down our poles either during winter season, summer season, or for whatever reason. But sign work, we did thirteen poles, seventy-one sign, nine sleeves, these are, these hold the poles up, uh, three straight name signs with brackets. Also, during snow events, for the whole season of nineteen, we had twenty snow events. We used roughly two hundred and fifty tons of salt. These events happen at any time, day, night, even weekends, especially on the holidays when everybody like to be home. We're out there helping everybody get around the town. Um, streetlights, we have, this year has been a, a bad year. We had a truck break down for three months. We had gotten it repaired finally when the budget was approved. So, it's a little light than normal, this should be a little bit lighter, no streetlight, but seventeen repairs. These are poles, wires, and photocells. It seems like lately, the damage is on the wiring side or the poles are getting just knocked down. I wish to say they were blown down, they're getting knocked down by vehicles, and sometimes more than one time. Um, and then the trees, uh, we've removed and trimmed roughly seventy-two trees this year. Roughly forty-some trees, and then within those forty-some trees, we, we removed. We also trimmed trees around those areas. Um, two thousand nineteen water repairs. Uh, was asked on how many, uh, fire hydrants that were repaired? But we'll start off with water repairs, upgrades. We had fourteen water main breaks in the year of two thousand nineteen. Twenty-three clamps were put on fourteen locations. That means we had multiple breaks in one hall. Uh, we had a hundred and seventy-nine feet of water main replaced, four fire hydrants, two T's, which include for the fire hydrants to replace, uh, two main valves, and we did eight B-box digs, and that's for the T-pod in the nineteen season. We also, in the summertime, which is our worst season for the grass cutting and extra staffing, is the grass cutting. We had fifty-six locations in town, we used to have about forty-two. Um, we've had a few things added, which is repeding lots and some other properties that we're cutting now. We roughly cut two to four times a month. That adds up to roughly an estimated number of six hundred and seventy-two. It's probably higher than that, because some locations get cut four to five times a month, depending on the season. Um, and that general, some general information on some of the general things that Public Works does. So, staffing wise, we had nine people. But those nine people, when I started here thirty, forty years ago, we had nine people. The town is growing by at least a quarter of its size, and we still have nine people. So, it's difficult to do a lot of extra work or more work. We don't have any money. We go approve a budget in a timely fashion, and we don't have any money even to approve more work. So, the rest of this information is just stuff we're currently doing. Staff has been preparing, uh, repaired a streetlight at sixteen thirty-five to sixteen street. The wire was broken underground about two feet at the pole. ComEd still has to reconnect the wire, that light hasn't been out for a while, so hopefully, when they connect it, there won't be any more problems. Uh, two fourteen forty-three Peterson and two, and sixteen hundred Constance, they're both on either ends of Constance. These are two lights that have fault locates that we located. All the faults are damaged along the fence line. You mean that somebody drove a fence pole in, didn't call for a duly locate, which they should have done before they dug, and hit the wire multiple times. So, that's a replacement section of both of these. That'll take a little time, but we'll complete that, and I'll do an upgrade on that information. Staff has also still out there, since the, since the economy in two thousand nine and roughly eight or so years of, of, of no money for anybody, uh, we've assisted many departments doing other jobs, including maintenance on vehicle, road changes. Um, any work that anybody's asked, we try to assist as much as possible. Plus, we do all the setups and any sign changes. So, also, staff has been working the customer service, which is our water customer service. We do water meterings, uh, we're gonna be doing it once a month, we're gonna be doing it a little bit differently, so this is gonna take a little longer to do. The shut-off listen term will take a little longer to do. We used to take two days, in two days, it will probably take a week to do those now. So, that's gonna add more time. We also let any, any comments or questions from the customers for water issues in their houses, they'll call and make an appointment. So, that person is daily with that. Staff has also been working at the community center. We, uh, trying our best to try to get in front of, of some of the updates and some of the, uh, improvements for some of the things that are gonna be happening over there. So, we started on the floors, we're gonna be doing some drywall work, we have some window repairs, and a bunch of this latest stuff to do in the building. That is ongoing. The, uh, rental side floor has been waxed, uh, stripped and waxed. The gym side right now, we're working on the game room, and then the front, uh, bleacher room, which then the gym floor will be the last floor in that building. We've also, uh, been looking into a few budgetary items, which, uh, we have some doors in the wellhouses on the main, the main wellhouse on Saw Trail. Two of the doors on the buildings were in bad condition, so we've budgeted to replace them. We received three quotes, um, quote, one that was the best quote, we accepted, and the doors will be replaced on the twenty-sixth. And then also, last item is, uh, staff has been out pavo patching, and we understand there are some sections that seem to come apart a lot faster than others. Um, we did notice a debris, that they did use a, uh, a liner or a matic system in that area there. So, it looks like we got some water under the pavement, about an inch under, which is making the top, top sections float in itself. So, that is one of the reasons why some of that area came apart faster than this warmer weather. Uh, and that concludes my report.
Okay, two fire departments. Kevin, could you possibly give us a copy of that? When you, when you form that? Oh, yeah. Oh, okay. Okay, okay. All right, then that's great. Uh, I think you have a question?
Uh, two weeks ago, I had to be able to give us a update on the fire hydrants. Do you have that for us? Just, you know, I guess which ones are not working, which ones aren't working, which one needs repair?
Um, I, so, did you report, you wanted to know how many that were repaired? That's what I just tried to do here.
No, 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 I mean, so, I see that you repaired the four last year. But I'm saying, just the kind of status of, okay, all eighty fire hydrants, and like the status of each one. Right, and how it will, needs to be replaced, um.
I do have that at this time, though.
Uh, reports to trustees standing in committee's public safety committee, trustee Gary Bell.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, before you move ahead, Mr. Mr. Baverick sent over an email and would like this report ready, and I sent it, put it in our packet. So, he sent over a message.
There's something happened, so I didn't get that one. All right, this report comes from our, uh, assistant, uh, director. Um, thank you, Mayor, Madam Clerk, and Board of Trustees for attending and attending residents in Saw Village. EMA in the last two weeks responded to four calls of service as they followed. On February twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty accident at seventeen oh nine, Saw Trail, took an hour. Um, February twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty accident, uh, with a semi versus a car on Indian Highway, by truck, by the truck scale. Um, February twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty assistant, assisted, uh, Saw Village Police Department and Major Crimes Task Force and Illinois State Police with investigation. Um, that, that was a nine-hour task. And then February twenty-ninth, assistant of agencies, uh, to Creek, to Creek Fire Department with a fresh fire. Thursday the twelfth of March, Saw, uh, twenty-twenty Saw Village EMA will be attended our smart meet, uh, hosted by Cadman City. And also, EMA is still looking for members to join in the fire. Says, "Thank you, Mayor, Madam Clerk, Board of Trustees for attending the res, and attending residents." This would conclude the end of my report. Uh, Alan Baverick, EMA Director. Okay, reports to trustees and standing committee, again, our public safety trustee Gary Bell.
Thank you, Gary. Uh, my committees will be open on Tuesday for seventeen, the fire prime eleven AM. That concludes my report.
Public Sa, Public Services. Public Service Committee, trustee Bernie Brewer.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to piggyback on some of the things that the Public Works Department, uh, stated in his report. I just want to say that nine people, they have had, tried to do as much work as they can. Uh, they, uh, we have been hindered with the, uh, kind of financing that we have been getting for the village, which, uh, equates to about zero. So, there's nothing much that has been done in the village for the last three years. And this is something you guys didn't know.
Use the mic, please.
But, I mean, I still, but however, uh, the funding is not there. However, trustees are working on trying to get into funding. There's only nine people to help with Public Works, and we need, uh, additional personnel. So, we're working as diligently as we can to try to get the money in here to do, um, infrastructure repair. As you know, some of these places haven't been touched since nineteen seventy-three. So, um, you can't do work if we don't have any money. So, we need to find.
Down here if we don't hear you. It's Mike.
And that's the end of my report.
Budget and Finance Committee, our trustee Roger Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say thank you for the trustees that, uh, gave me the comments. I do plan to take them back to the committee, kind of make those changes, and then also send them to the attorneys, uh, per, uh, the board requested, and then I should bring it back to the committee meeting in a couple of weeks, and then, uh, we'll see what happens from there. But that's all I have, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Housing and Governmental Relations Committee, trustee Sherri Zeski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the Housing Committee will meet March twenty-fifth at seven o'clock in the boardroom. And I am looking for other members, if you're interested. Please leave your name and your number where I can contact you at the front office, and they'll put it in my box. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Orders Review Committee, trustee Liz Tanna.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, the next Orders Review Committee meeting will be April thirteenth at six-thirty here in the Batunda. Our committee met yesterday, and we have several ordinances that we're going to be presenting at the committee on the hold. Um, we took, you know, the board's recommendation, talked about that. But the one thing I want to bring up is, the one ordinance what has to do that was, um, drafted by our attorneys, which had to do with the Attorney General requesting something as the protocol of the clerk. Dude, I think is how it ran. Now, this should not come before our committee because it's drafted by our attorneys. So, put the direction of the board. My, my request is that this needs to be voted on as soon as possible, and possibly in a special meeting on Tuesday. Now, I don't know if the board wants to submit changes to the attorney, but the Orders Review would, would not be going over that because it was drafted by the attorneys. We do not, we do not go over the things that, because it was drafted.
Is this the one you're talking about, the duties of the clerk?
The one that the Attorney General is requesting that we, that the board does, um, submits a, thing.
Okay, did you say that's it? Go ahead.
It's the protocol. The one that was given to us last week, the clerk submitted changes on it.
Okay, that's what I'm.
That's the one.
Is that one for the, for the, uh, the duties of something for, for the clerk? Is that the one you're talking about?
Per the binding opinion of the Attorney General. We had requested that our attorneys draft an ordinance. Yes, ma'am, we did. Oh, it says an ordinance, I'm lying. That's fine, but what was handed to us, Madam Clerk, was an ordinance. And the Orders Review Committee is requesting, because we are, we will not review it when it's drafted by the attorneys. And, and what should happen is that the board, if they wanted to submit changes, should go before the attorneys, if they have questions or whatever. But this needs to be voted on as soon as possible because of the binding opinion.
See, my question is, were there changes made?
No. Our, our Orders Review, our Orders Review would not make changes.
No, no, I'm gonna ask more. Were there changes made in open, at a committee meeting or anything? Well, it was, is this ordinance that you're talking about, was it? Was it? I don't know about this one. It's got a lot of money, but were there changes made?
The ones that are in red is the one that the clerk had submitted last week at our committee on the hold.
So, that's what I'm asking is, does this need to go in discussion before it goes to vote is my question. That's, that's the question I'm asking.
It needs to be a discussion, but we're going to need to take a vote. We're going to have to do some type of special meeting, or we're going to have to get it voted on soon because of the binding opinion, opinion with the Attorney General.
Okay, let me ask the, um, attorney, is this something, is there a deadline for this? Or can it be voted on in two weeks? Or is there a reason that it needs to be voted on next week? And, and talk about it, voted on right away, that's what I'm asking.
May I just recall, we prepared the ordinance in correction of the board, set parameters, like it was already done, how the process would work. And it's just for getting minutes of meetings into the packet, and getting the minutes approved, and changes to the benefit, it's very straightforward. And basically, binding, uh, thing, and obviously, of the Attorney General. So, you've been violating going meetings then.
That's what I'm asking, is that you.
There were no changes that were recommended by any board members.
Yes, there has.
I thought that, that looked like it had changes on it.
Those were the clerks, but there has been changes brought forth to be filed for at members' search.
Okay, my question, my question, uh, Mr. Attorney, my question is, does it need to go for discussion again before it gets voted? Or you're saying that it was already voted on?
No, no, it was agreed by.
It was, okay, so you said it was agreed by the board?
By the corporate authorities. It was drafted in correction of corporate authorities. I was not told that there was any change made by any corporate authority. And I received a phone call from, uh, a clerk last week, uh, five minutes before I was going into a deposition, and she raised concerns about some past ordinance, procedures, and policies of the village clerk. I said, "That's a separation." This is an ordinance, just very straightforward, basically, the approval has two minutes. They give you the minutes online, and then to the minutes book. And I said, "If you have a issue with that, bring it up to the board." Took the board, I found the board to rush.
Okay, but the only thing I'm asking is, okay, they want to discuss. My question is, is there a reason for a deadline in the week between now and next week? Or can it wait until the following week? The call is special meeting, the same, I, I have no problem, I just wanted to know if there a reason why it needs to be voted on next week versus the week after that? Because I'm sure this is gonna be on the agenda for next week for the committee meeting to discuss that.
I'll leave it up to you and the board.
I'm just asking if there are reasons, if there are reasons. I'm just, I'm talking about leaving it out there. If there are reasons that needs to be voted on right away is basically what I'm asking.
As far as legality, if you've heard of it, it's valid, it's old, and it has binding opinions that you're not filed opening it.
Mm-hmm.
You don't have to take as much time as you want. For me, I would take it very quickly and get a pass ordinance to the Attorney General's office that showed you in a month.
Okay, well, that, I'm gonna be.
A week, a week, six months?
After, after that, but I'm just saying that, I just would like to have it go before the board on record that this particular, as it was drafted and presented, is what they agreed on, and then we go forward.
Then I would ask if there are any changes by any board members, for them to email me directly, and I'll make a change.
Okay. Thank you.
So, that you're not gonna make a change once, uh, suggested?
With all due respect, I, I take directions of the board for it.
Thank you. Yes.
What, what does that mean?
Could you use the mic, please?
I mean, he's just making this. Anyway, okay, uh, I just wanted to find, I, I mean, we need, obviously, we need to discuss it. We need to make sure that what we're presenting is what is agreed on. Because I see changes, I see some things in there that are, that are in red. So, if I can get, if you can give me a clean copy that we can go without the red, or if, if it's upgraded to red again, to make sure that's what we, um, want to talk about, discussing the board. Because if I get anything that has red, then quite naturally, it draws a red flag to me that some of this is questionable. So, I just wanted to make sure if that's what it is, and the board agrees on whatever, that's in the record, saying the board agreed on X, Y, and Z, and we can move forward and pass that, that's all I'm asking.
Okay, and I've said to me, county and any trust, if there are any changes to that in the county, I'll incorporate it, and you're, your county's on the side, so, to the, uh, department.
All right.
Sir, why did you tell me to send you changes? And now you send your own.
We can't hear, we can't hear.
I'm talking to the attorney, we're making this one.
But we have.
We have arrived at your one being.
That's why we're.
You have such nice.
I know it was so nice, but you know, you guys can just, come on, listen. I said to you, Mr. Attorney, why, when we talked, and we admitted that we talked, and I said I had some recommended changes, I'm asking, why did you tell? I'm asking, why did you tell me, after they're all together, to send them to you? If now you're saying to me that you will only entertain changes that come forth by the corporate authority? And then, no, before you answer, then I have another question. Because I do, I'm not one of the corporate authorities, but I do sit on this board, and I am an administrator and an elected official. Are you saying to me then, that if something was to happen where the village clerk is concerned, there's no representation through Olson and Sturt that I'm discounted? I mean.
Well, initially, with our conversation, I said if you had changes or issues with any of the ordinance for the minutes, I said, bring it to the board. I never said for you to send it to me, because, well, the problem with that is, you never sent me anything. I got a copy of your revisions from a trustee, you never sent me any revisions. Okay, well.
And I know that the man don't like us to go back and forth, but I don't have an opportunity to talk to you, because you're always too busy when I make a phone call to you. However, as I explained to the trustees, that it made no sense to send to you to piecemeal different changes, one by one. And that after they were all compiled, we could send, and agreed upon is what I said. And agreed upon, then we would send you that, so that they can be, the changes can be made. So that you're not making changes that the trustees are not in agreement. I mean, it just made sense. And not one trustee, and we didn't talk, I didn't talk to all of them, but the one that I talked to definitely did not say that there was a problem with that process. But I, I'm just trying to understand how come, each time you come before this board, there's always just a little bit of consternation? Where the village clerk's office is concerned, and these minutes? True, you have a binding arbitration, we have to do that. Is there a deadline in that document? Did she give you a date to have everything done? The reason why you guys are constantly just pushing through one ordinance after the other, only to turn around and have to amend it? The same as we're getting ready to do with the housing and the inspections, we're getting ready to do, redo that? We just worked on that a couple of weeks ago. You push through stuff too fast. Let's take a moment. Because we're still being, uh, no, I, I was.
That's absolutely nothing to do with.
But we're talking ordinances and rushing through ordinances. I'm just saying, let, let the trustees review it and communicate about it collectively, not behind the scenes that you all constantly do with your individual conversations. Let's do, let's be open and honest. Take care.
Okay, that's, uh, we can get that from you, um, by next week, or before next week, and we can review it, and then, uh, have it, I'll put it, have it on the agenda to review this, uh, particular ordinance. And, uh, we'll go from there. We need to have a special meeting afterwards, uh, on that same day, we can do that.
My only question is, what would you want from me?
I just want a clean copy.
But a clean, but I said a clean copy.
The one I got that had the red on it, too, is in my office.
But again, those were changes by the clerk. If any of the trustees made any of those changes?
Oh, so you're saying, so you're saying that the clerk's changes, we're not gonna incorporate? That's what I'm saying.
It's up to the board to vote on that, but if you want a clean copy.
No, no, but I'm, okay, but I'm gonna need, because we need to vote on whatever, we don't need to vote with red in it. We need to vote on it that's clean, that, that everybody agreed to. So you're saying that the one that I have that has the red on it, that's what the clerk has, has put in? So you're saying that doesn't, you don't, you don't wanna resent that? You wanna resent one that doesn't have those?
No, no, if, if the board is buying with those changes, then.
But then I, then I'll ask this question then, what we can do is do that. We can get it, uh, I guess, I don't know if everybody has a clean, I call it a clean copy without that, or incorporate that and make that the copy. If the board doesn't like that particular one, they can vote on the one that doesn't have those in it. So we can have two separate ones next week, by next week, present it to the board, have it at the committee meeting, and if we need to have a meeting afterward or a special meeting, we can have that special meeting after committee, we have to be doing the discussion. Okay, thank you. Um, next item is, um, I'm sorry, Public Events trustee Heather Wade.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, yesterday, uh, we did have a very, um, great meeting with a lot of outside entities that were talking about abandoned buildings, and what we can do with properties to keep them from demolition. But today, we also had a very good meeting, Taco Tanya, she's not here to speak on it, so I'll speak on her. We had several people from outside the community and inside the community. We had two pastors, as well as several people that were interested in what the Taco Tanya is focusing on, is Saw Village beautification. And some of the people that were here today were also focusing on options for our youth. So the Taco Tanya is actually the second Tuesday of every month. It was actually a very good meeting, and the, and the people that are attending are growing. But getting back to the Public Events Committee, there's a new calendar on the back table. Uh, I tried to update it as much as possible. So if you have an old calendar, please pick up a new calendar. We have, uh, the, the events that are coming up, this Saturday, from eleven to one, is the Cook County Treasurer, Maria Pappas's office will offer help with property tax problems. The treasurer's staff will assist homeowners searching for seventy-nine million dollars in available refunds, apply for forty-four million dollars in missing senior citizen property tax exemptions, and to check if their property taxes are delinquent. That will be held in the Saw Village Senior Center this Saturday from eleven to one. The new events that have been added to the calendar is the Saw Village and, uh, Beautification and Clean-up Project is tentatively scheduled for June sixth. That came up today in the Taco Tanya for the beautification. In June, we also have the Fireman's Golf Outing on June twenty-seventh. And we've added another recycling event, which has been confirmed for July twenty-fifth, from nine AM to eleven AM. We'll be collecting medicine, documents writing, electronics, and one TV per household. That is on July twenty-fifth. The Public Events Committee is this Monday, the sixteenth, at five thirty. We'll be focusing, and we'll be reporting on the tax workshop, reviewing our calendar, talking about the youth programs that we're working on, the blue letter, and the fundraising. And one last thing I'd like to mention is that the Crossroads Church is doing a St. Patrick's Day Corner Week dinner. If you want to have a corner week before you come to the meeting next Tuesday, from four to seven, Crossroads Church would be glad to accommodate you. And if you want to talk to me, I can get you carryouts, or I can get your dinner reserved. And thank you very much, that concludes my report.
Boards of committees and commissioners, senior vice councilor, Chairman David Farmer.
Thank you, thank you, Eric. Trustee. Next meeting for the senior vice council is Thursday, March twelfth, at five o'clock, while we're wumming. And also at four PM, on the same day, we'll be having our senior club meeting, uh, for a basis on senior club membership. You can contact, uh, contact me. Also, come out and join our seniors for breakfast bingo every second of fourth Friday from eleven AM to twelve PM. Also, seniors don't forget game night here, the first and third Friday. Couple card games, such as BitWiz, another game from six PM to ten PM. Also, committee members will be teaching BitWiz from six PM to seven PM. Uh, and that's every first and third Friday, for those that, uh, do not know how to play or want to learn. Also, the seniors will be hosting a noon date BitWiz on this Wednesday, March eleventh. Uh, for more details, contact Vice Chair, Ms. Armie Coleman, and you can reach him at seven seven three five three one zero six nine nine. Also, seniors, our first senior lunch in the year will be held Thursday, March twenty-sixth, for, uh, March twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty, from eleven, eight PM to two PM, uh, in the senior center. There's no cost to senior club members and five dollars for everyone else. So it, it pays to, uh, to be a, be a member of our senior club now, or you don't have to pay to be a member of our senior club. Open to, uh, it's open to all individuals, our senior club membership that's fifty years and older. And, uh, contact committee member Deborah Coney at seven oh eight seven one zero four five six four. Also, if you, uh, do not wanna have a, or pay the five dollars for your, for the senior lunch, and expect to have some really good food on that day, you can't actually become a member of the senior club on that day and not have to pay anything. All right, but we do want as many seniors as possible to go in our, um, senior club and get these, uh, benefits. And that's all I got, thank you.
Thank you. Um, next item to business. I accept the motion to approve the accounts payable and disbursements dated March eleventh, twenty-twenty, for four hundred and twenty-six thousand, five hundred and ten dollars and seventy cents.
Second.
Move by trustee Bell, taken by trustee Juzinski, any questions? I have a question.
Trustee Juzinski?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Bell?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Motion carrying. I accept the, uh, motion for the resolution outlaying, outranging the agreement between Saw Village and the Southern Berlin Mayor's advantage.
Second.
Move by trustee Juzinski, second by trustee, sometimes, move by trustee Bell, second by trustee, uh, Brewer. Any questions?
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Bell?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Juzinski?
Yes.
Motion carrying. Another table motion for the resolution establishing a complete street policy for the village of Saw Village.
Second.
Move by trustee Williams, second by trustee Juzinski. Any questions?
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Bell?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Juzinski?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Motion is carrying. I'll intend a motion to approve the collective of faults for the infrastructure repair.
Omo. Second.
Move by trustee Bell, second by trustee Juzinski, any questions? I have a question.
Trustee Bell?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Juzinski?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Motion is carrying. I, number twelve, General Thomas, on the band board of trustees, to stop at trustee Williams.
I have a comment.
Trustee Bell?
No comment.
Trustee Grant?
No comment.
Trustee Juzinski? Trustee Brewer? Trustee Todd?
Oh, wow. I see you.
Do you have some of that, that, um, that's what it is? Anyway, I'll accept the motion, I don't have anything, um, other than, uh, be careful. And, uh, I, I forgot to say that, um, I didn't know that the, the fire chief, after the third time, that you wash your hands, or I, I did not know that, I don't, you know, so, that makes sense. But anyway, keep your hands and be careful, be careful where you go, and be careful, Todd, considering what you said. With that being said, I will accept the motion for the girl.
Omo.
The move by trustee Bell, taken by trustee Todd, all the same.
I.